Reception.
Yeah, well, that's why I just went around and checked.
Well, seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Before we start, for those that, you know, did get the email that one of our previous councillors passed away, recovered, and that's why our flags are flying to half-mast at the town office in recognition of his contribution to our community for the two terms. And so, and Paul just said that there's a bit of a reception on.
Yep, one to three on Friday at the lodge hall in the basement.
So.
Drop in snack use.
Yeah, some of you might not have known him, but yeah, he's been in our community for quite a few years. Anyway, just to bring it up speed and additions to the agenda, is there any additions to the agenda? Okay, if not, somebody wish new agenda is presented. Okay, any discussion on Laal's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Great, thank you, moving on to the minutes of the previous meeting of June 28th. Any questions? Hearing revisions? Hearing none, somebody wish to move them, that's Paul. Okay, any discussion on Paul's motion? Hearing that, we'll call the question. And again, it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to correspondence, there's an invite for the Pitcher View in District Chamber of Commerce, from Pitcher View in District Chamber of Commerce for their parade on August 22nd first. And any questions on that?
Okay. Oh, I guess I do. Do we have to let them know for coming? Is that what they're asking for our machine?
Well, yeah, if we wish to participate, they want to know, and then we need to, you know, show up.
We can respond, and generally council, to clarify for anybody, you can make a motion that any councillors that want to participate can.
But how much you get the thing down there?
Somebody asked.
The float, that's part of our deal, yeah.
We know our float is working properly.
Last night it was, oh, yes.
Yeah, we'll have had an opportunity.
So, that will be before our SPOC days parade.
No, it'll be after.
Sorry, after, so we'll be able to use it.
It's nice when SPOC days was June, then you have time to figure.
I mean, it runs, it's just we have never taken it to a parade. They drove it back in from, after they put the transmission in it. But it's never gone to a parade per se. So we'll have SPOC days before.
Do we want to try it and then cancel?
Pitcher View, so it's relatively close.
I don't know if we have a driver for it anymore.
Jeez, sure.
Yeah, Keith, Keith won't be able to drive anymore, he indicated that.
Oh, okay.
But we can, we can find one.
Okay. So do we want to?
Okay, well, I'll say if it's working well and we have a driver and if people can go and.
So we'll just make a motion for us to respond to Pitcher View that we'll participate, and any councillors would like to participate along with our vote?
If I can hear that.
If available.
When is, sorry, to change on the, when's that? Is it the first weekend?
It's usually the first week in August, isn't it?
Because we did say we'd go to.
I think, is that July 31st? Or is that the next weekend?
I think it's the seventh, Lauren, but I don't know.
Yeah, okay, because it's not the long weekend, it's the weekend after then, I think.
It's not only the seventh, it's the weekend of the 31st, maybe the seventh.
I'm not sure, anyway, we'll look into it. I just wasn't sure, because we did commit to.
Yeah, I was just thinking, because it's nice if they know that they have people coming or not.
Okay, so Lauren made a motion to participate if we can, and any councillors that wish to participate, I guess let administration know. Okay, any discussion on that motion? If not, we'll call the question.
I'm sorry, Laura.
Lauren, sorry, yeah.
I was taking.
Oh, I made a mistake, how do I correct my mistake? You took everybody's.
We can have.
Yeah. Yeah, I.
Hit the wrong button.
Hit the wrong button, but.
It won't let you take it back.
I don't know how.
Is that, there's voting screen up a second time? Oh.
Yeah, so did I here.
And did you vote the first time?
I did vote the first time.
Okay, I don't show you this voting, so.
Okay, well, let's try it again and see what happens. There you go.
And did I show up?
Because I've got, no, you didn't.
Let me know the computer system.
Yeah, well, that was my fault, it was strictly my fault, I liked the pink, I guess, so, anyway.
Paul, did you go?
Again?
Again, there we go.
So it is carried unanimously, thank you. So it was, it was all my fault. Okay, moving on to the letter from Fairview.
Do we have a standard letter of support, since all these towns are sending out emails asking for support? Do we have just a standard letter of support that you can just send?
We did last week, or last meeting.
Okay, so.
You guys approved sending out a letter of support.
So anybody else that sends us a letter of support for us, you can, then you'll just automatically send that letter up to them?
No, no, we did one to Minister Madu. These are sending it to us as members of AUMA, RMA, those sort of things, so they're just sending it to us for information.
Okay.
So.
And R has gone to them as this?
Yes.
Okay.
And each letter seems to have a slightly different point of view.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is good.
I quite enjoyed this one, to be honest with you, because, you know, talking about some of the historical stuff, like 1917 to 1932, I was, I was kind of impressed that somebody took some time to research a little bit of that, I'm not saying it isn't out there easy, but I was, I was impressed with it. Anyway, so that's another letter of support for the status quo. Any discussion on that letter? Okay, moving on to the Village of Caroline proclamation.
This one was very odd, it came with just an email, please forward this to your council, and then it's just the proclamation that obviously the Village of Caroline did.
Okay, moving on to the Town Council letter to Minister Panda about the removing of the HHW funding.
So do, does this have any impact on Seewa?
Not on Seewa as much as it does on every municipality.
Just on our regular.
Garbage collection, because, because if, when they do shut down Swan Hills, which is estimated that they're going to, and they don't have another location for it to go.
Where will it go?
Where will it go? So, I know that Vulcan District wasted already has sent a letters with all of our municipalities, saying that they're disappointed that the funding is going to stop. Because what it does is it makes it so that, you know, if you have a small amount, you can't send it, it's not economical, so you have to wait till you get a big enough.
Truckload.
Hopefully you store it in the meantime.
You store it like everybody does, just in a big pile, and then potentially there's a.
Any hazard is a hazard.
Is a hazard is a hazard, so I think that's the sad part. And then the other part, too, that's not totally said in this, but it has been brought up, is that there is no plan for what's going to happen with, when they shut down Swan Hills, period.
Is there a reason they're shutting down Swan Hills?
It's just too costly to operate, and it's, there's no money been put aside to upgrade it.
And if that's the only place in the province.
Yeah, well, and it takes, it takes waste from B.C., Saskatchewan.
It's been taking waste for 20 plus years.
Yeah, so it needs some upgrades, but there's never been any money put aside for the upgrades, so the province is just going to shut it down, so. It's this household hazardous waste funding model that's, is the sad thing, so. I know that the Waste Authority is, or has, or going to send later on behalf of municipalities. That's not to say that we can't do that too, if we so desire.
Well, maybe when we're right, since we're writing letters, we have to make a motion that we send a letter off to say that we are curious as, well, not bad word, as to what, where we will be sending our hazardous waste in the future.
Okay, so Lauren moves the.
And then some of the wording that's in here about the ceasing the disposable, disposal funding for that. Where it will this come from local municipalities once again. Sorry.
Okay, any, you got it down, Karen, pretty well, or?
Yes, sort of.
Yeah.
Sort of.
Well, you know what, our intent is.
Yes.
Yes.
As long as we get a motion.
But to the ministers supporting the stance of.
Okay, any discussion on Lauren's motion? Hearing that, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to current business. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, apologies, thank you.
We'll make that motion to receive it for.
Thank you, George Lee. Yeah, sorry, there's a couple that we didn't have motions on, so. Okay, so any discussion on George Lee's motion to receive the correspondence's permission? Hearing that, we will call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to now, current business, local authorities capital financing application.
Sure, councils all had a chance to read the report. Since the bylaw was passed, obviously Alberta Capital Finance Authority has moved under the provincial government's umbrella again, so they changed the name to what, what it is, but it's local authorities borrowing that we will be borrowing from. We have all of the bills paid for the pool, and the amount outstanding outside of the grants, the donations and money that council held in reserve is 1.69, 768 cents.
Thirty-six cents.
Thirty-six, sorry. I'm sorry, 68.
Well, one's 68, one's 30, then the next, oh, I'm sorry, that's the amount annual payment.
Yeah, so I did a quick comparison for you for where the original loan payment that council approved in the, in the bylaw was for 2.5 million over 25 years. The current interest rate, when we calculated this on July 8th, was 2.702, with an annual payment of $138,998, with a total interest to be paid of $959,875. Based on that, you guys have had this, these discussions dating back all the way to 2019, when you were looking at moving ahead with this project, and you were looking at 135 to 140,000 dollar loan payment for this, and knew that that was in the range with the debentures that are coming off in the next couple of years and that, that it wouldn't impact budget. So if you would like to stay at the same rate, you could lower your term down to 15 years and an interest rate of 2.266, which the annual payment is $133,583.36, and lowering the interest paid down to 313,049.72. So it's a significant savings time and interest wise, so. But on the other side of it, you could still remain at the 25 years, you would be paying more interest, but obviously your annual loan payments would be $40,000 less per year, which allows you to increase some programming within the budget as well. So there's pluses and minuses to both. The interest rate is obviously the same as the top with 2.702.
Going forward, if you do it on the shorter term, it gives succeeding councils time to put some more money away to, I know we just built the pool to replace it.
Or to other larger capital projects.
Larger capital projects.
I mean, theoretically, I mean, the previous pool lasted 40 years, so if you kind of calculate it, if we went for the 15 year, you know, you've got 35 or 25 years of time before you need another one. If you went to the 25, and you went with the 40, you've got 15 years approximately of time between paying one off. And it, there's the interest, I guess, too, you know, there's substantial interest, you know, there's between the 15 and the 25, there's, you know, $300,000 of interest that you would save, but you also lower your payment by 40.
And that is the thought that if we pay it off quickly, people that are here now are paying for the whole thing, and the people on the other end are getting it for free, in essence, but.
But I guess, too, if you look at the previous pool, when it was finished, there was no debenture on it at all. For the 40 years, the people.
Had it for free.
Had it for free. So, I mean, yeah, there is that, that philosophy, that the people debenture longer, the people that are utilizing, utilizing are the ones that are paying for it.
So we've put together, basically what we need to do is, is council's permission to move forward with the borrowing. You already have a bylaw, you've done all of the, of the policy work behind it. We just need help with the application process. As you know, we've already put together all the information that we need, we have submitted it, and everything seems to be in order. It really comes down to what interest rate and term that you would like. So we've canned a motion for you that if you'd like to move forward, the council approved borrowing of 1.69, 768 cents from the Alberta Loans to local authorities for a term of this many years, as per borrowing by law 1487-19, and direct administration to submit the necessary loan application. Really, we're just looking for, for the, the amount of time you would like to do this.
Laura.
I'd like to make the motion that we go for the term of 15 years with the 2.266 interest rate.
Okay. Any discussion on Laal's motion?
I'm glad to see that they're all 2.7 and less.
Oh, yeah.
That, that helps, too.
And worth the comment, when you borrow from Alberta Capital Finance or the provincial government, once you make that motion, you are locked into that.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't fluctuate, it doesn't. And so, as you are all aware, when we review annually our borrowing, we have loans sitting in there right now that are as high as 8%. So seeing that we're able to borrow at 2.7 is probably going to be one of the better rates that we have on borrowing right now.
Well, if Laal's passes, it's 2.26.
Yes. That's right.
Okay, any other questions, thoughts, before we call the question? Okay, hearing that, we'll call the question. And it is carried with one of those. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to 5.2, early ice request.
You've all had a chance to read the report. We had the request from the Loma Lakers for the ice for a month early. As you can see, the people also reached out to the skate club and the minor hockey. It looks like minor hockey are interested in two weeks early. In conversations with, between Bonnie and Stu, starting a month early puts a pretty heavy burden on our public, on our public works trying to make ice, starting obviously in the middle of August to have it ready. So we tried to break down, Bonnie's included the costs. So the cost is about $13,000, and the expected revenue, if we were to use every hour that they are committing to, would be about $5,300. As you can see before, from that, the Loma Lakers, between August 30th and September 2nd is only five hours, and from September 3rd to 20th is only 24 hours. So we did, in the years past, when we did have the visons there, we did annually come to council and ask for a two-week early starting period, so it is possible there, obviously will be $7,000 approximately expenses for them.
What level of hockey are the Lakers playing at?
They are.
Junior B.
Yeah, sorry.
The junior B.
So, in past years, they have, Lethbridge has their ice in a little bit earlier, so they do start, some teams do start their practices down at Lethbridge. This was just a request to see what council thought of them. The recommendation from Stu and that was, and Bonnie, was the, if council wants to go ahead with the 15th, that puts less of a burden on. Ultimately, there's costs involved.
Would minor hockey be quite willing to start on the 15th of September?
Yeah, and you can see that minor hockey, they committed to from September 15th to 30th, 60 hours, which is the majority of the, of the funding that we considered at the $5,300, so.
I would make that motion that we open it on the September 15th, the two weeks early.
Do you think the skate club might change their mind if they, if they knew it was going to be?
They may, they may have the ice in.
At least they have an option.
Yeah, because it seems to me they were always wanting skate camp to be earlier and earlier.
And Bonnie, Bonnie did mention the possibility of renting ice to other groups. That's there, we bring in extra, extra revenue, that's wonderful, so.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of everybody by George Lee to.
For September.
For September 15th to open the arena. Any discussion, comments? Okay, hearing that, we'll call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to 5.3, Mr. Wardley, Vulcan is going to the Olympics.
So you've all had a chance to read the report. It's very straightforward, Kiara is obviously going to the Olympics for rugby. She grew up here, right through elementary to high school, and has participated at a world level since leaving high school. This is obviously one of those things that's going to bring recognition to the town of Vulcan as well. And as Bonnie mentioned, we're going for Star Trek, but now we can also add an Olympian to our, to our credit as well. So what they're looking for is some support for Kiara, and that because this is a one-time, you know, we haven't had this experience before, there was nothing to really draw on. So we put together the different ideas that were brought forward, and then through the recommendations, we broke it down into either one motion that you can do that has the three components, or you could break it down and vote on, on the three components separately. And the components, the first one being that directs administration to provide a formal letter of support at 50 pins. The reason why the 50 pins needs a motion from council is because your policy only allows for 25, and because she's going to that, we'll, we'll supply her with those pins. And if they want more than that, through our economic development side, we can, we can provide those ones at cost if they wanted to take, say, take 100. So, and then the organizing event, that's more for council's support to allow for the screen to be used and to direct Bonnie to work with the community to put together a viewing party for, for those games. And then the placement of signage along the highway. And they, they were talking about putting something possibly in the planters downtown, those sort of things, just to, you know, show support and to let everybody know. And then the last portion of that was for financial support, because apparently there's quite an expense involved in going to Tokyo for the duration, especially with the quarantine times, those sort of things. So I reached out to some other organizations that are donating, and they felt that that 500 to $1,000 range was, was there, and that's really what council needs to have a discussion on is, is to what level you'd like to sport all of the, all of the things that were asked.
I think this is really just quite amazing that she is our only Albert on the team as well.
You know, in the past, we've had other people that have done things, and we've kind of recognized them with a a plaque that's at the library, we've got Glenn Gorless, and then we also have Pat Walker, who was in the Commonwealth Games. I don't think we've ever had anybody go to the Olympics that I know for sure, but, but we have got some recognition for those two other people that participated that were from our community. I did receive an email from Jim Heather, I don't know who he is, but anyway, he's says, I hope very much that the town of Vulcan will acknowledge success, her success in a special way, and that everyone will take the time to acknowledge with pride that this young lady has done. All citizens of good conscience should be enormously proud of her. And, you know, yeah, anyway, so yeah, I don't know who this Jim Heather is, but he did send me a, a text.
In, in the conversation we had, you know, regardless of how the Olympics go, that is, that is something that she'll be recognized for her entire life, and Vulcan as well. And that's, that's, that's quite a thing that we, we made comment of it when we were putting the report together. That's going to be in the history book someday.
Yeah, and she was on the radio, and she, you know, spoke about her, her love for, you know, sports in Vulcan. And so, I mean, she's been on the radio, too, promoting that, you know, they thought it was kind of neat how that it. I, you know, so I never had heard of women's seven rugby until she was going. Of her, you know, the rugby part, but I never knew that there was only a team of seven, that.
They're going to be extra tough.
I would imagine rugby's not a friendly sport, and I shouldn't say that too loudly, because John will crucify me when he finds out that I said that rugby's a, it's a tough sport, it's not a friendly sport for.
Trust me, it's not a nice sport.
Not for the faint part, I never played it, so I don't have a clue.
I played.
But I've seen it, and it, but anyway, that's taken away from Kiara's accomplishments and, and her opportunity to go, so.
I gotta move this word to $1,000 level.
Okay.
And I would question whether 50 pins is enough. That's two teams.
Yeah, you could, you could do more.
Well, if she promised to bring back any, she didn't give out.
Yeah, because she's also has to travel with these things, so we don't, don't want to. A bag of 100 would be about that big, right? So we could, you know, you could do 100 if you. So we could, you know, you could do a hundred if you'd like.
Two hundred pins?
Okay. Do you want to do this all as one big motion or do you want to split?
I'm comfortable with it.
Everybody's comfortable with it as one motion as...
Okay, so...
So Karen, we can up the pins to a hundred and the donation to a thousand? And it is council where I just need to point out that in that grant, one-time grants to organizations that there'll be a five hundred dollar balance at the end of this.
Okay.
Do you, do you need any, like, do you need a motion? Like, I know this motion's on the floor, but do we need a motion about the screen and, and all of that or is that something?
This is doing it all, so I can read the entire motion if you would like.
No, just tell me where it's at.
It's right from the start of recommendation. So there's three, it's broken down into three different segments, but Paul's making all three segments as one, as one motion. And it includes a council approved the use of the outdoor screen and the rect department's support for community viewing of the Olympic Rugby Seven Games as well as the purchase and placement of support signage to be funded through the twenty-twenty-one Recreation Tourism Operation budget.
Now, this is Simon, do we know approximately what time the event will be known?
No, no, and, and, and that caused quite a bit of conversation because if it's during the day here, our screen doesn't work very well outside. So whether it could be done in CRC and then they're trying to figure out time differences. But since we started talking about this, there's a good portion of the community that wants to get involved in, in promoting this and that. One, for instance, Jack Fulton with the, with his organization and with the staff here's background and that, he's, he's got some friends that want to help promote this as well, so.
Oh, that's good. I was just curious if anybody knew. I mean, I know it's only two and a half weeks away, but, two weeks away, but...
Businesses downtown are doing things in their windows for her as well?
Well, that's nice. Okay, so, so Paul's made, made this motion and he's put the limit or the amount on for a thousand dollars and a hundred pins and, and the participation from the by the rect and tourism committee or department. Okay, any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, we'll call a question. And it is Carrie DeNancy. Thank you. Okay, moving on to committee reports, Old Man River. Any questions on Lyle's report on that one that he brought back? Okay, hearing done, move on to the minutes of the MPC which Lyle...
Should have been at, should have been at the last meeting, it's already been recorded.
So is, is Rita's job description as a development officer yet?
No, she's just a development clerk, so she puts together all the...
I just, it just, when it was there, it, I don't know if it's a comma there, but so you're...
Yeah, development officer and then, yeah, it's just the, because it's the way that you put the people into the iCompass system. She copied Nancy's permissions, so we'll, we'll just have title changed on it.
Oh, that's okay, I just...
I did change it.
Okay, I just, when I saw it, I wasn't sure what, maybe there was a title there that's open.
Probably a little bit more background for everybody. When we create somebody inside iCompass, like you all have your own profile. Paul's not going to run for council again and a new councillor gets elected, we will copy Paul's profile with all of the same permissions in that and put the new name in there. So when we put Rita in, we copied all of Nancy's permissions because she needs to...
Which is fine, I just, I wasn't sure whether...
It titled her as a development officer for that first meeting.
Thanks, okay.
Did she come out after a race?
No, no. Like I said, Karen changed it before anybody saw it.
No, that's okay. I just, when I saw it, I just wasn't sure whether we...
No, development clerk.
Had settled on the title, so...
No, I'm still acting as the development officer from the town.
Okay, so, any questions?
Glad this didn't come from the last meeting.
Yeah, that's okay. Moving on to the Marcus Foundation.
I do have a question for Georgia Lee, she's good enough to answer.
I can answer, sure, come here.
Sure you can. I'm sure you can. Well, anyhow, I can't find where it is. Oh, here it is, I mean, business. Mr. Pahn is coming to the lodge on the twenty-second. Was anything else said about that?
Nope, just that he was coming on the twenty-second.
I said she.
Oh, she, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that's it.
Oh, okay, I just thought maybe...
Nobody said good, ready, or nobody said...
Yeah, I was just wondering why she was coming, so. Okay.
Thank you. I think she just, but what I could understand what Lori was saying, she just kind of wanted to tour their facility.
So am I reading too much into it to hope that this is a really good thing?
Based on the meetings you had?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think you probably are reading too much into it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Well, I think that, you know, the, you know, with the cabinet shuffle and with everything else that's going on, I think that they're trying to get out to...
Get their faces up.
And get their, that's a person, this, when I talked to Mr. Schrell, Schrell, or Schrell, that's the feeling I got is that they're trying to do some more dog, more hockey than what they've done last year, so.
Okay, thank you. I just thought maybe she had some secret inside information that didn't come in the minutes, so.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Laurie didn't mention it.
Okay, it's fine.
Okay, any questions on the Marcus comments from Lyle? Okay, if not, Water Commission, water, water commission.
He has another question.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
At the end, I see you renewed the manager's contract. Is that for four years or five?
I believe it's five because didn't, didn't it have to go over the next election? So new councillors would, that sit on that committee wouldn't have to do her, her contract. It would give them a year on there to find out how everything is going and then her contract would come up anyway.
And I, and I'm not saying good, bad, or indifferent about this, but how did you arrive at the seven percent? Two percent for the cost of living, but why five percent each year?
It was, well, I think it was just to bring it up to par, wasn't it? In that, for what she does, like her job description and all that, it was just to bring her up in line with her other water commissions and stuff like that.
Okay, I just thought that seemed like quite a high amount right now, so I just, I didn't know why you wrote that, so, okay.
Well, they do have the money for it, so.
Sorry?
They do have the money for it.
Oh, I know, and I, and I know as a town, we don't really have a say, so, well, other than our two representatives.
It was just basic, basic part, bring her up to where other managers are and stuff like that. I'm just curious.
Okay, any other, like this water supply agreement, is that for all the water, like what was it all about?
Okay, you're up, Mr. Two. The water supply agreement.
I didn't bring a copy, but... So the agreement with all of the users is about to expire at the end of this year, so the commission has to look at sending those out to all the communities to have them reviewed. And I know from the town of Vulcan standpoint, we've made notes over the last couple of years of what changes we would like to see to that.
So let me ask you a question. How come we never handed our water license over?
No one did.
Yeah, Carmengay, was it Carmengay or Chaminet?
Carmengay, Vulcan.
Champion's was sort of a different watershed.
She said that's why they sold theirs.
So they sold theirs.
Okay.
And...
The county kept theirs, the town kept theirs.
And the commission bought one.
Yeah.
Oh, I was under the understanding that we were the only one left with the, with the water, well, us and Carmengay, wasn't it? Were the only two left, like on the line with the water.
No, county, county has their own.
The water licenses.
License is what, water irrigation, so.
Oh, because there is a little bit of a discussion about that, about why Vulcan won.
And there is, there is other philosophies of why you don't want to sell your water rights. Some of it is that there's a potential that when it's, it potentially can go from the date it's sold. So Carmengay's went back to nineteen sixteen, their water rights. So if it's sold in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty to that water commission or given to them or whatever, then that's the date of it start.
And the problem is we reevaluate how much water can be taken from and may not allocate the same amount. So I know some of the original discussions were, do we want to mess with our allocations because they'll be reevaluated, so.
So potential, let's say that you have a hundred acre feet, you can lose that because you, you don't have enough demands for it. So you can say, well, now you're down to eighty acre feet, you're seventy acre feet for it, so.
I was not even understanding, I was under the understanding that once, once the water line went out, like our way up to Carmengay, then everybody along the way had to hand in their water licenses.
No, everybody kept their own licenses so that basically like...
Champion didn't give their, they, they, they sold theirs to somebody else.
Yeah.
They didn't tell us that.
No, well, they couldn't because it was on a different basis.
Yeah, they were, they couldn't, they couldn't include ours in their intake anyway because it was from a different water base.
Yeah, it comes out of the infrastructure from, off the, off Carsland instead of the Vulcan.
Interesting.
And as you can see with California, water's a hot issue now.
Yeah, the, the only reason I asked about that water agreement is that it doesn't say anything, just, it's just water supply agreement and it just was moved to be accepted for information. So I wasn't sure whether there's a new agreement coming out or whether that was a full agreement that was going to be, you know, because we, we have some concerns about the agreement as a council and so.
Will you come to us before you sign it and send it back, right?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I hope so.
And, and really from the discussions that have been had is whether the agreement goes to, well, you, you guys have been involved in all conversations. There's concerns with the rates that everybody pays as, as they have users, those sort of things. And the commission's now been in place for a good number of years where there's reserves in place, those sort of things. So perhaps now is the time to move to a, a cost recovery, a full cost recovery model on, on the water. You know how much it costs to make a, to make a cubic meter of water? And that way whoever uses the water pays for that portion of water rather than on, you know, formulas that were created fifteen years ago. And that way loan payments, those sort of things, it doesn't really matter. Whoever's using the water is more based on the, and that's the conversation. The last one after we had the last conversation with the water commission, nothing has changed. Do you guys have provided me with any other feedback from them? So I've just been waiting on the agreement to, to make those comments.
Only thing is, is that sometimes it'd be nice that if there is some input that we can put in before they come up with the agreement.
Before they draft it.
Before they draft it, but obviously we don't really know what's been drafted or has been altered or whatever because it just has, it's been accepted information. You know, some of us have major problems with put, put or pay, you know, I mean, it's not a, not a fair method that we get penalized for not, you know, trying to conserve water or if we have a rainy year or we, you know, don't use as much water, there's no, you, you pay for it. You pay for other municipalities and, and, you know, we've, we've argued that concept for the last five years and it's fallen on deaf ears with the water commissions.
And, and something, you know, like they, they evaluated usage for a five to twelve-year period and determined that the town of Vulcan uses more than the original allocation that they thought should be, so they bumped our rates from, up two percent to seventy-four percent from the seventy-two. And it was based on usage, yet now we're in for a new renewal and Champion has added little boat. So now they've added a significant water user to their, so should their rates be changed? And that led to the conversation all the way back to, if you know what it costs to make a cubic meter of water, then we should all be buying in for that cost. Then we're all promoting adding as many people to the, to the system as we can to get our costs down, those sort of things. Because then you're not penalized for adding more people or for having a, a good weather year or, and, and there's something, we would be penalized where we would have to pay for the water anyway if we did an environmental program like promoting low-flush toilets and, and showerheads, which is something that you can get grant funding for to promote in your community from an environmental standpoint. But according to our position within the water commission, we would be penalized for doing that, so.
So there's no, there's no advantage to, to enter into an incentive program, Lyle?
Is this not something that the town, like we, I, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward to me. Is this not something that the town could, could be directed at administration, drop something up of this that we can send to the twin valley water commission so that they, they have it in writing what our...
Yeah, yeah, we've done that. It's not the first time we've done it.
But you've got two members from Vulcan voting and six from the other municipalities. It's a stacked deck no matter what.
Right, but if everybody's on the same page for changing those agreements.
Yeah, the only thing that, you know, when I just read it, I just wasn't sure whether the agreement was going to be changed or whether it's just going to be sent out the way it's been in the last fifteen years. So we're going to be asked to either discuss it after again, so we're going to be the holdout again. Instead of trying to be proactive and say, we need to look at this agreement to make sure that it's, it's got some incentives there for everybody that's fair and equal.
And administratively, I will be reaching out to Kathy before and hoping...
I can, I can drop my copy off for you just to point to if you want.
No, that, you're...
It wasn't done in camera or anything, it was a, her close session.
Yeah, if you would, that would be helpful, but again, I'll, I'll reach out to Kathy and get the vulnerable from our end.
I think this year the amount of water is, usage is up, is it, or not?
Yeah, it's just starting to be.
Of course, we've got less coming out of the pool too, so.
Yeah, we got penalized last year, like, you know, it cost us seventy thousand dollars, you know, last year because we didn't use enough water. So why wouldn't we have nice green lawns and say to all our residents, we're going to pay for it anyway, as, you know, so we're going to lower our rates to all our ratepayers so they can have nice green lush lawns instead of saying, no, you know, conserve and be the good, you know, corporate citizen stewards of, of the environment. We're being penalized because of it. And we've been, this isn't the first year that it's happened. It happens year after year after year. So any other thoughts or questions? Okay, if not, some of you wish to move committee reports? Laura? Any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing done, we'll call a question. And it's Carrie DeNancy. Okay, moving on to councillor's forums, councillor Taylor.
Well, you just had the water commission one. I was at the opening of the swimming pool. That's about it.
Okay, any questions for Paul? Hearing done, thank you. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Wave my hand. So did everybody wear their jackets on thirty-three degree day?
Are you kidding me?
No, just check, just check.
No.
If, if so, I would have fermented you greatly, like, I mean...
It got a little melty.
It's fine for us.
Well, I just sent out, you know, I, because I was one of the ones that said that I was going to wear mine and then that day, and I, I did put it on for about five minutes and that was my, maybe tried it without a T-shirt, just put on that Vicky and, and I said, no, I don't think I can make it.
That polyester lining just sticks to you.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I didn't last anyway, but thank you, any...
I got mine out of the closet.
Well, I, I had it on, but not for long. So that's when I sent everybody that was, that was wearing mine, so. Okay, any else for Paul? Okay, thank you. Paul, Georgia Lee.
I had the Marcus Foundation for Lorna, the water commission and the Grand Ocrene of the pool. That's all I had.
Okay, any questions for Georgia Lee? Councillor May, councillor Magus.
Uh, we didn't have any meetings and we didn't get to the grand opening of the pool, but living by the pool. I guess my only complaint is the amount of people there. When I come out to turn on the seminary, it's just packed with people. And of course, that's all time and cheap, but the, the amount of people I've talked to, just getting all sorts of, of praise for the pool, that people can say, you know, it's maybe it's because we didn't have the pool last year or not. But either way, people are just saying what a great facility it is. Like the, the wire slides, like one that he says, well, my kid threw lessons. Wire slide was recently human, that water slide. So, um, yeah, there was one hiccup we saw on social media, but, uh, some of that I think was well-coached as well. But I think, yeah, for lots of positive things.
Okay, any questions for La? Thank you, La. Councillor Ponce?
Well, I was at the opening of the pool and that was all I had this last week.
Okay, any questions for La?
Yes, how's your finger?
Uh, much better, thank you. Much better.
Okay, thank you.
Put a nail through it.
Yes.
Councillor Ollie?
Um, I had the, uh, Health and Wellness Foundation for Lorna for the AGM. Um, and that was one of the shortest AGMs ever. It was very succinct, but it was also incredibly interesting seeing the previous meeting that I had been to, I think, about a year and a half ago. And the change in terms of they had a couple of the, um, the board candidates at the AGM introduce themselves and went through some of the, um, requirements for the new board. And it was definitely, definitely very different. Um, it's interestingly structured, I guess, a different than any other board and they definitely have changed direction and there's going to be a lot of new stuff happening from there, but, yeah.
Okay, any questions from Michelle? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. Moving on to Councillor Armstrong.
Uh, I had no board meetings, or, yeah, committee meetings because I gave them all away. So thank you, George Lee and Michelle for going for me. And, uh, this probably doesn't really have to do with my report, but, uh, have we heard when they're coming to pay, repave for Street South?
Stu has checked with the engineers and, uh, they were hoping that it would be the end of August, but he saw Stu's scheduling mid-September.
Okay, no, I just was curious. I hadn't seen anything. I want them to fix the stop sign when they're taking.
Yes, yes.
It's kind of laying on its side.
Got bent up pretty bad there.
Nope, had nothing.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Okay, hearing none, thank you, Laura. Okay, me, the only one I had was the pool grand opening and I'd like to thank the councillors that did show up and administration. I apologize, I didn't introduce you folks. Um, that's the disadvantage of not writing a, uh, uh, speech or agenda, but anyway. Um, I did have a couple of people ask me sometimes where I was going in some of my conversations, so hopefully I didn't lose everybody, but. But again, thank you very much for everybody that was able to attend and, and, and just like Laal had said, you know, we've heard very, very positive things about the pool. Um, you know, we've seen and heard some of the hiccups that they're going through, but unfortunately, I think with everything and just the times with COVID being what it was last year and, and some of the staffing issues, um, I think most of it, once you explain to the, to the public that it's, you know, a lack of staff with the requirements that are needed for today. And so I think that the, you know, we've got a kind of a little bit of slack on that. Anyway, um, the other one was I, again, more or less like Laal had said, a couple of them have said that I was over in High River and, and this lady was just going over and over and over about, you know, the Vulcan Pool and how great it was. And, and, you know, it was kind of nice to see how much participation financially came from, you know, local people. So that was nice to hear, so. Yeah, so other than that, I didn't have any other events that, you know, I attended.
There was people from Red Deer here.
Yeah, it was her home.
Yeah, um, Laura, she used to be Hakey. She married her mama's body right out.
Okay, yeah.
From Craig's Way. They came down, she gets out by, I think it's East of Red Deer.
Thing Caroline area.
Yeah, and they came all the way down for the grand opening of the pool.
Oh, that's great. Like I said, there was a.
The CAO from Yeracana came down just because he heard about it.
Yeah, there, there was some, you know, and, you know, again, too, you know, we, Mark Shields was there and, and, you know, Joseph with, uh, R M L A and both of them were, I mean, I picked on.
Martin a lot.
Martin a lot, a little bit, and picked on the federal government a little bit, but, you know. Um, so anyway, yeah, so it was, it was great to see a good, good turnout. There was, there really was a good turnout. I mean, it was kind of spread out a bit, but being it was so hot, um, I appreciated the a lot of staff that set up some tents to, to be able to stand under or sit under and make it a little nicer for some people and, you know, but, yeah.
Has everybody been in the pool?
No, I haven't been in it yet.
And I was talking to the engineer.
He's been here?
Totally, yeah.
So he grew up in a town in Manitoba, similar size?
I've been down to watch.
They go to hockey here.
Been in so many times, I'm probably going to break yours.
That's it, nothing else. And he looks at what we've got here?
Yeah.
Very impressed.
And again, too, you know, I, I think that's the thing too, is that we have to look at what we have and what we can afford and, and hopefully, you know, keep, keep what we've got going. And I think by seeing how our adventure is not as big as what we anticipated and that we came under budget, you know, and so that, that was a nice, nice choice. Anyway, anything else for La? Okay, thank you. I need somebody move the councillor's reports.
Most of them.
Okay, any questions on Laal's motion? Hearing none, any call for question? And again, it's Gary Nanoski. Okay, moving on to activities list from the management report.
So my management activity report, uh, just about every, we completed everything from the last meeting. As you can see, we still have a few outstanding items that will be, the traffic bylaw and the, uh, procedural bylaw, hopefully we'll be able to break back fairly quickly. Other than that, if there's any other questions from council on anything that's outstanding?
Okay, well, CEO's report.
So, uh, most notable, uh, speaking with, uh, with Lisa in our Recreation Department about, uh, the support for Kiera in the last, uh, days. We had lots of phone calls from other people in the community that would like to know what, uh, what kind of stuff can be done and where, where we can go with them. So it should be pretty exciting. Uh, it sounds like lots of people have some really good ideas for supporting Ki, uh, Kiera while she's, uh, she's gone to Japan. The, uh, we got the paperwork, uh, for Gabby. She, uh, her application has now gone to province for, uh, to Solicitor General for her appointment. Uh, she was able to run the pair down at Blackbridge. So they, uh, she, uh, they've been limited the amount of people they can put through there because it's, of course, it's a physical one-on-one, uh, thing that they have to do. So, uh, that was completed. So now we're just waiting on the province for her appointment. Uh, Stu, uh, finished up tender, uh, information and we reopened on Wednesday, or sorry, Thursday this week. So Stu's just, uh, reviewing that. Also been working with Nav Canada, Transport Canada for, uh, a notice to airman on our airport. This is based on a recommendation from the flying club because of, uh, noise, uh, late at night for the touch and goes. So the recommendation was to, uh, put a notice to airman to know we do allow right-hand circuits off of Runway sixteen. So sixteen is when you're headed, uh, from north to the south, taking off or landing and, and, uh, you can only do that from, basically from the west, so they're not flying directly over town. So because that one needs to go to Transport Canada, there's quite a few different steps in there. So, uh, the gentleman that I was supposed to, uh, talk to was, uh, getting back to work today. So, uh, I left a message again today with him. Looks like everything's scheduled. Uh, forward, uh, community concerns, uh, really, uh, a lot with the, with the pool, just expectations of hours, the staffing. I've, again, uh, as I explained earlier, uh, anybody that reaches out by email or telephone and taking the time to personally respond, um, letting them know, uh, what, what we're dealing with. And also throwing it out there, uh, I know, uh, that we've been working with AHS to see, uh, to what extent we can have volunteers a, as well. So, uh, we're trying to explore that as well for peak times where there may be people in our community that wouldn't mind volunteering some time so that we can keep longer hours, those sort of things. And we're going to try to balance that. But ongoing, you guys are aware of the, of the issues. Uh, it really comes down to the amount of people and the amount of hours that we can work. So the expectation and, uh, to be completely honest, our hope was to have that place open as many hours a day as we can because it's a, it's a great new facility, so. Uh, and then we did have some questions from, uh, some residents, well, the court parties that went into parks that were approved at council at the last meeting because of locations and those sort of things. The feedback more than anything was to making sure that they were, uh, were on schedule, cleanings, which they are. Uh, they're clean once a week and whatnot. If you've never had one in your backyard before or next to your backyard, people don't like court parties going into parks. Uh, on the other side of it, they also really don't like people peeing on trees, so. So we'll try to balance that way. Uh, and from there, uh, I was out of the office on July second for a family funeral and then, uh, took some vacation days to, uh, take my family to Little Bow on, uh, the fifth, sixth and seventh. So between the two weeks from the meetings, uh, I was away for four days of that and the grand opening, obviously on the first, so. Unless there's any questions?
Just a curiosity of the airport?
Yes.
When did the airport go in there? Being a newbie, I must hear.
I don't, well.
We took it over in the seventies.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, uh, the, the grass strip was put in in the fifties.
Okay.
But, um.
So it's been there a good long time.
Yeah, yeah.
And it used to be provincially run?
Well, like the grass strip originally wasn't, and then when, uh, when they put the strip, the new strip in, then like the big one, the south, then like Kim said, it was ran by the province and the province then turned it over to the two municipalities, so county and town.
It used to be in the counties until the two thousand and one annexation and then it became part of the town, so, yeah. Yeah, so.
But there, you know, there's restrictions on the grass in the way too, so this is, isn't new. Uh, lots of municipalities have restrictions on, I mean, we're supposed to do that hand circuits, not right-hand circuits, but, um.
Yeah, but when you're doing it at one A, one AM.
Yeah.
And, and your airport's that close to, uh, the town.
I'm curious, yeah, no.
So, yeah, it's been quite a process. I mean, anytime we do that, uh, yeah. That's, uh, my report. Uh, I did also want to mention, as you guys noticed, uh, Stu, I told, uh, him that I would bring council up to speed as you, you know, he had a pretty rough week last week. Uh, he didn't get our report done. Uh, he was, he in, uh, the South Calgary for five days. Uh, they put in a stint. He's feeling much better. He's back to work today. We're going to allow him drive to, drive again today, so. He's feeling much better, but, uh, yeah, he had kind of a scary incident and that was, uh, the day before the grand opening of the pool. So the few that were around knew that there was some panic there because Stu wasn't available. Of course, being Stu, he sat in the hospital with his phone still, trying to help, so.
I know he touched me at five fifty-four in the morning.
Yeah, so. He, he came home and said he was very tired. I'm pretty sure it's because he didn't sleep early, so. But he said he's feeling much better. Really glad that they caught it before anything bad happened. So that's the reason why there's a public works report right now, uh, as far as public works. And like I said, I would give a verbal as part of my report. Obviously, you see the work they're doing down on Main Street, trying to get that, uh, concrete work done and, and the planters all put back together and, uh, uh, paving, he's been working with the engineers to find, it sounds like it's going to be an end of the season.
There's a good meal up?
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, other than that, irrigation, trying to keep up with, uh, the sun and, oh, and grass, so. That, that's where he's been.
Who chose the trees for them?
Stu works with, uh, Cortheus Tree Care and.
Because it's nice to see those, what are they, Asian pear?
Yeah, they, they, they tried to do more ornamentals that don't actually have anything that drops. So no, uh, they still flower, but they don't have dropping fruit, so. Uh, Cortheus and Stu work back and forth. John makes some pretty nice recommendations for.
And I've heard a lot of really positive comments.
Pass that, pass that on to Stu, those guys. Uh, what, those that you've been down there, notice they're, they're coming in early in the morning and working before it gets busy down there and then, uh, and then shifting off to the arena and other places at parks in the afternoon. It's, he, the, they've had some growing frustrations with, uh, sometimes it gets very congested down there and they, people seem to think they're in the way, so.
You know, and unfortunately, you know, it's, it's too bad because I think some of the businesses, you know, we, we do a, a major re, um.
Retrofit?
Retrofit. I was trying to re, I was going to say rehab on the, on Main Street, you know, like if you would have done a block at a time, for example, you know, full year, you know, four or five months of complete shutdown, your front street, sidewalk, all works. So I appreciate it's kind of disappointing to have, you know, a little bit of inconvenience, but the inconvenience is tried to be as mediated and made as little as possible.
I just thought maybe there were a lot of people standing around with indirections.
Well, there probably is.
It's, it's, it's more getting even out of store, those sort of things. And when they're doing those blocks, most of those bubbles are right in front of the store and people will park right next to a backhoe that's parked sideways. So you can't, you know, and it's, it, it gets, when it gets congested down there, it's really hard to run that equipment and that around there. Uh, they had, they had somebody that actually moved a barricade and walked right through the wet cement. Like they moved the barricade too and then told the guys that they should have been better marked. So it is those sort of things that, you know, but, so.
But it is coming.
It's coming and they're, uh, they're making progress every day, so.
You need to write a book and sell it to make, make some money.
Do you have any idea when they're doing the next two on the Dollar Store side of the street?
I don't, I apologize. I don't know what schedule they have. When I talked to Stu, he just said, we're continuing down Main Street, so.
Okay, I'm only asking for the right of people.
I can find out for sure.
Um, construction is going on at the bakery right now.
Oh, okay.
And so I'll have to make arrangements for them to get in the back door if they're doing fresh concrete right at the.
Right at the front door? Yes, absolutely, yeah, because you're.
They just pick up the sign and.
The, the entire front brick in that area as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just then I know because I can get locks changed at the back door and everybody going in that way if we.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have seat touch base.
Sure, perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on?
Mine slash public works?
Yeah. Okay, if not, we'll move on to development works. Okay, any questions on that one? If not, we will move on to community services. Now, you'll have to explain to me, because you told me once, but like, we're, we'll pick on swim club. It says nineteen ninety and then it says swim lessons, four hundred and ninety-one of slash.
Of the available. So four hundred and ninety-one of the five hundred and seventy-five available swimming lessons spots.
Okay, I, I mean, I hate to, I'm glad that somebody is able to explain it because it doesn't. To me, it's Greek.
Sorry, we tried to clarify.
No, that's, that's fine. I might have to ask it a few more times before it becomes.
Yes, and the reason why they're tracking that, normally we don't track that as closely, but, uh, we're tracking it as closely because of the Lions Club paying for all the swimming lessons this year. So they're making sure that everyone of the spaces is accounted for. Normally, we would hold those sort of lessons and then if a child, you know, if everybody. Normally, we would hold those sort of lessons and then if a child, you know, if everybody shows up for the full thing, then they get credited for, for being in that lesson.
And lots of the things about Porch Fest again, except for the temperature. Which we don't seem to have any control over.
Very warm for that as well.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
The tourism center this weekend was very, very busy.
Okay. Okay, we have nothing on that one, and we'll move on to community services. No, I'm sorry, peace officer.
There are new peace officers still enjoying here, John?
She is, yeah, and, uh, really enjoying getting to know everybody in the community, uh.
Yeah.
Just this week, she, uh, will, she's participating in the radar LIDAR, uh, course, so that, uh, once her appointment comes through, she can, she can do some traffic and, uh, and then, uh, shortly after, we'll be updating her OC and TON and, you know, we'll be good to go for training wise for the, uh, potentially till the end of the year and she's very excited to, to be out. Uh, as you can see, the majority of the complaints are, uh, somewhere outside of the jurisdiction, but she's able to, at least she's got a good working relationship going with the, uh, with the county and the RCMP. Yeah.
And I probably should know this, I don't, LIDAR means?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's, uh, different between the radar, it's a, it's just a different speed measuring device.
So I don't want to be caught by either of them?
No. I think the, the radar is a.
Big pattern.
Is a reflection thing and the LIDAR is a laser.
I was gonna say, laser.
Yeah. They shoot things down the hallway and measure how long it is for calibration.
Okay, any questions on? Okay, if not, we'll move on to fire managers report. So, um, it says July eighth of twenty twenty one, but then it says for the month of June.
June twenty twenty. I think that's Peter's, uh, template, yeah.
Okay, no, I just was, might make sure that, I kind of figured.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, just not updating the template, uh, and as you know, with, uh.
Well, kind of basis is the worst thing I've personally heard.
Yeah, and, and, uh, I think Peter had to cut his, his leap short, I think, to come back.
Okay, any thoughts or questions on Peter's? I don't mean to be so critical, I just.
No, we'll, we'll.
No, it's, it's just, you know, sometimes you think, well, is it, is there a mistake or is it just, uh, missed? And I assume it's just a missed.
To be completely honest, I, uh, it's something that we, the copy paste has become fairly evident to us because with the iCompass, uh, for the things that we do year after year, we can now use last year's stuff, so, yeah. We watch verticals for the dates and things like that, so.
And the names and jobs and.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and it's, it's really easy to do, I'm not trying to belittle the, the reporting, I just.
Cause you see what you wanna see when you're checking it.
Yeah, I could see the, the, the number itself has twenty twenty.
Over.
Right in the file, so I, I'm guessing that it's the, cause it pulls the numbers out of some, uh, their program, so I'm guessing.
Sometimes your fingers aren't going right way either.
Well, I, I don't, like I said, I don't make it to be mean because I'm sure that if they mean, that would be making those mistakes too, so. Okay, any other questions on any of those, uh, reports? Okay, thank you, George Lee, who moves the administrative reports. Any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, looking for another motion. Michelle, thank you. Moves as adjourned. So any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, thank you very much, everybody.
I'll try to stop the video before that goes on there loud.
Somebody shut this down, okay?
Sure.
Is there anything needs to be logged out of or just further damage?
No, you just close the, uh.